Okay, so good evening. This is Eric Moore. This is Concord's Town Meeting Study Committee. The meeting of May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. The time is seven o four and call on the meeting to order. Hey, everyone. So I can clerk. So so the deal with this is our last meeting. So the deal with the clerk is that the chair can approve the minutes. I'm okay with clerking unless someone wants to clerk and have me approve the minutes, but I'm happy to do it.
Roll call.
Well, clerk and then roll call.
Oh.
Yeah. So any objections to me clerking?
No.
Okay, good. Cool. Thank you. Okay, so Eric Morris clerk in tonight. I was so worried about that.
Yeah.
Okay, we're not expecting Keith Bergman. Katie Bresnik, please.
Aye.
Hey, Katie. Kristen Haggerty, please.
Here.
Alice Kaufman.
Here.
Eric Moore present, Parashar Patel.
Here.
Phil Swain.
Here.
Chase Thompson. I do not see Chase Thompson and Eric Van Leeuwen.
Here.
Cool. Thank you. Okay, public comment. So David, you and I, David, I'll remember the public. We could have some correspondence. We're going to talk more about the clickers question at town meeting. I'll we'll have I'll give you some time so that we have a full exchange.
And be happiest not to have anything to say.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Good. Thank you. Seeing nobody else from the public moving forward. So minutes, we have a stack of minutes. I think my question is, has we have we all had a chance to read through them? So let's just start in order with the minutes from March tenth from from Kristen Haggerty. So just to begin discussing them, has anybody read them? Has people read them? I've read through them.
They just went out today, right?
Yeah. Moving forward to the March twenty fifth minutes from Eric Moore. Folks wrote those. We can take a few minutes for people to read them if that makes sense so that we can close the business tonight. We also have minutes from April twenty second, Keith Bergman. Those are in the packet.
It belongs in the packet, I read.
Okay, super. And then Phil Swain.
You sent them around an hour ago, so.
Yeah, that's true.
But I did bring hard copies. I printed them out. Wow.
Wow.
So I see folks have laptops here.
I did not read yours, yeah.
So let's just take a couple of minutes. I'm fine with taking a couple of minutes to skim through the skim through Phil's minutes. There's one typo in them, Phil, which is Kristen Bergman.
Oh, my gosh. What did I what did I write that?
It's in there somewhere. You know, that's my technique for reading minutes is just to look for your name.
Sorry, Kristen.
It's the bottom of page three, second paragraph to the last.
Oh, gosh. I'll fix that. I didn't send that.
But that's interesting because in the meeting minutes for three twenty five, it says we approved the meeting minutes for three ten, my meeting minutes, and I thought I had sent them, so I was surprised to see them on today's agenda.
Yeah, it might have been an error on my part, but I think they weren't posted online, so I think.
Because I definitely had sent them to the Eric, who I think you probably did include them.
You didn't rewrite them, did you? Okay.
Did not rewrite them. Maybe they were. I did not did not rewrite them.
So I have another typo in in my list that is my name is spelled correctly in the in the list of people who are present, but then throughout the rest, the V in Van Leeuwen is lowercase, but that should be uppercase.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
No, no.
I'll fix that.
Technically, I was on there on eight thirty, but I don't know whether that matters.
Oh, you're on. Well, I'll put that in.
I read wrong eight thirty, actually.
Yeah, you didn't say anything, though.
I was in the hotel having dinner. Dinner in Nashville.
No, no, no. What I mean is, I saw you online, but.
You have an excuse.
I saw you online, but I know you joined pretty late.
Yeah, no, it was around eight thirty and all the regular discussion had already occurred. I was listening.
I'll fix all those.
That's okay.
So thank you for thinking of us. Any comments at this point in any of the minutes? We can take a group.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes from March tenth, which may be a reapproval, but for March twenty fifth, April twenty second and for May sixth. Any discussion on these minutes? Moving to a vote then, do the roll call thing. I'll start Katie. I'll start with you. Katie Bresnik, an I to approve the four sets of minutes, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Kristen Haggerty.
Aye.
Alice Kaufman, please.
Aye.
Eric Moore, aye. Parashar Patel.
Aye.
Phil Swain.
Yes.
Thank you. Not seeing Chase Thompson, Eric Van Leeuwen.
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes are these four sets of minutes are approved unanimously. So March tenth, March twenty fifth, April twenty second and May sixth. Thank you. Carmen was joined and then Perry is joined as well. So so our spring timeline, you know, we're pretty we're at the end. Carmen, thank you for joining. One of the things I'd like to just get an update from you on is just the select board meeting from the from the twelfth, talking about, you know, time limits and deliberation. I was at the meeting, but it would be better if you summarized. Also curious if you'd had a chance to hear anything about the Carlisle Town Meeting. But the remainder of our meeting is about the twenty town meeting twenty five preparation. Shannon's updated the webpage. We can talk about the participation study we did and then any wrap up that we need to do.
Do we approve this on the twenty second? That roll call, I thought I just heard three minutes.
No, four.
Well, you said four. Okay, that's.
Yeah, no, I read it through. That's okay. Couple of things coming up this week. There's a meeting with the legal women voters, their warrant review. Carmen, myself, and I believe Kristen will be there.
Yeah, I was gonna attend.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Just a witness.
And so their their agenda is the Article twenty seven, the remote participation voting, and I think a discussion or a clicker use at town meeting. And then, of course, for town meeting proper, we've got the committee presentation. The chair, the moderator's meeting is allocated six minutes for that. I have to practice and I will. And then the moderator's meeting allocated five minutes for Article twenty seven. Both those decks are in the packet. We're going to spend time in them tonight. So Carmen, please, can you just talk a bit about the the five twelve select board meeting and anything you know about Carlisle?
Hi there. I don't actually know anything about Carlisle. I could check and see if I hear anything that I can share during this meeting. And what was your other of the other question? I'm sorry, Eric.
So discussion of the select board last Monday on the twelfth around the question of
That kind of time limit.
Time limits for deliberation.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I would say that they were very reluctant to impose a strict time limit on the meeting, especially in view of the fact that we do already have a mechanism in calling the question for the meeting to decide itself when it wishes to stop deliberating on an article. They were, however, very much in favor of, in general, kind of a straw poll from the moderator. You know, twenty minutes or half an hour into discussion so that people would be able to see whether how many and when I say straw poll, I don't mean of the vote, but of how many people have made up their minds, how they're going to vote. And if it looks fairly unanimous that people have made up their minds, perhaps folks would take that into account in continuing to come to the microphone to speak.
My impression, thank you. My impression was it wasn't it wasn't a real change in current practice, really. I mean, I've seen you ask, you know, twenty minutes in or thirty minutes in, how are we doing? You know, are we ready to are we ready for a vote? So so I thought it was interesting. It was an interesting discussion. So thank you.
I did a different take on that. I thought they were really supportive of taking the straw poll regularly now because at a certain time, which I think was like thirty minutes and then it the meeting continued to deliberate after that. It was going to be fifteen minutes later and kind of like diminishing. So I think what I heard was an appetite for taking that straw poll earlier than has been taken in the past. That's kind of what I took away from it. But but it's interesting because I think you you guys heard heard it differently.
I actually heard it, though, to what Kristen said.
Yeah, I was consistent with.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I I didn't speak very well, but yeah, yeah.
So I mean, I think it's like, but the other thing was they said they're not going to make a rule of the meeting, right? So that that I think was a good call. So Carmen's just gonna, you know, not wing it, but you know, Carmen's gonna, you know, use her discretion, but try to, you know, maybe get a little nod at the at a certain time. And then I think that'll be good feedback and then people can, you know, use the survey afterwards. If they say we didn't have enough time to deliberate or it felt more efficient and we had enough time to deliberate. So I think it'll be an interesting experiment.
Yeah, good.
Particularly on night one, when there's going to be a lot of articles, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Moving forward.
Oh, and read Carlisle.
Carmen hasn't heard anything.
The only thing I heard from somebody who attended was I said, you know, they were going to do like a family day first. And then the 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 meeting itself was in the same location. And I said, well, you know, did you notice more family age people in the room? And he said, no, it's just one anecdotal evidence. So I I will look forward to kind of hearing. I think he thought, you know, they have clickers. It looked like about three hundred people and I and he didn't know if that was how that ranks with previous meetings.
Sure.
But it was longer than they thought it was going to be. There was more discussion and and the moderator made reference like to like, well, at least we're not conquered, which is even lengthier, not like said that way, but he was saying like, it's even lengthier when you go to Concord, when people are like, wow, this is a long meeting. That's that's the third hand information that I have.
I think we can own the truth that we like to talk here.
Would you?
Yeah. Good. Thank you. So right, so so I'd like to go through the the two different meeting decks, which I have in line here. I haven't rehearsed this and I'm not going to time it, but I want to ask, has everybody had a chance to take a look at these decks?
Yep, they both look longer than is going to fit in that time.
Yeah, I believe that. It always takes longer, but I actually thought he only had about ten slides.
This is like ten or twelve, yeah.
Yeah, so the committee charge slide.
You're not just know.
And I understand you don't have to say the names of everybody on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, okay, so our report is up. It's on this website. I think actually as well. I'll add a link to this. If you go to Concord, I mean, I've got TM twenty five, you'll see a link to our committee and that's the report. Our committee charge recommends steps to make town meeting more inclusive, effective and responsive to the needs and desires of the town. And we had three citizen petitions from last year as well. This is the committee, some very familiar names, people with a lot of experience in town government, a few people, including myself, with much less experience in town government. So it's a really interesting mixture of folks that way. Carmen Reese, the moderator, is the appointing authority and Cameron McKenna, the select board liaison. Committee process, we were thorough, thirty five public meetings, paged in the Concord I make a website, townwide survey with survey with a little over a thousand responses. Our meetings have gone to Minute Man video. I need to correct the the name of that. We did a a long talk, the legal woman for legal woman voters in December, and we did coverage in the bridge. And again, I think that our committee process, I'll I'll claim, and maybe I'll cut this, is methodical, rigorous and open. It certainly followed open meeting law. So the survey was a key vehicle for telling us about, you know, what you the public thought about our town meeting. Again, a hundred, a thousand, a thousand responses. The seven point six percent is from the twenty twenty five census. This number will change. I'm going to go back and use the twenty twenty four, so it'll be in the neighborhood of of nine percent. Katie and I are coordinating on that, too. So the feedback was town meeting takes too much time. Town meeting takes too much effort to attend. You know, the responses, especially in some of the questions we asked around remote participation and voting and clickers and so on, was real openness to change, real appetite to change. I'll say that, and again, I need to work on this point, is that within the survey responses, the people who come to town meeting frequently, the regulars, as it were, really market the different attitudes about town meeting, the folks who come intermittently or less frequently. And I need to summarize what their difference is, but I'll say that the town meeting is working really well for the people who come here all the time with some with some complaints. And again, the, you know, from the survey, the open responses in the survey really emphasized how important town meeting is to to people in town. There was a lot of emotion, some heat and some praise and and the survey responses. So our priorities for our work this year. Number one, I will say, is to protect full and fair deliberation, to not break the fundamentals of our legislature. A second, and this is really in response to to second, to improve participation, both in terms of, you know, the making making lowering the barriers for participation in town meeting and also trying to see if people could be more engaged by what we're doing. The third is to demand less time, both in terms of running a more efficient meeting and in terms of looking at the scheduling of the meeting to make it easier to attend. And fourth, improve communication in terms of what we know at town meeting and how how efficiently we can deliberate. Boy, we really do need to rehearse this. So in terms of in terms of participation, the key point enhance, you know, we we have, we did some, you know, we did some research and and the level of accommodation for folks with disabilities is is good, but not everybody knows about it. And so to enhance awareness that way is a key point for us. Remote participation in voting, you're going to hear more about this with Article twenty seven, is has huge potential. I mean, time meeting participation, practical for many, many more. So, you know, you'd be able to participate in time meeting from home someday. In terms of less time ending earlier, and we see that in this year's calendar, this year's schedule, more than consent calendar, so that we have less to deliberate on. You know, looking to sort of how a high interest articles can make it more convenient for people to stack their attending. I'll explain that differently and to consider more active moderation so that when we consider the balance between fair and full and and deliberation, we, you know, think a little bit more actively about efficiency as well. You know, again, with respect to how the public really voiced a desire to to have a more efficient, a more a more higher paced meeting. In terms of fair deliberation, you know, our support for clickers this year is in response essentially to the idea that a private vote is fairer to many. I think there are pros and cons about clickers, and we may have that discussion. But I think that the privacy argument was the one that was most persuasive for the majority of the committee. We did take a look at representative town meeting and open town meeting best suits Concord. We took a hard look at that. Full deliberation, the town meeting briefing book, which we all have here, is is intended to make it easier to be fully informed about what's going on at meeting. And, you know, again, the more that we understand, the better quality deliberation we have. An article from last year, voting reform. Again, we looked hard at that and it's not practical. It's not. It's not legal under Massachusetts statute. And it would basically end up meeting as a legislature. We didn't see a real benefit for the public in doing that, and it was a huge effort to do it. And then finally, you know, Concord has this uniquely a full series of pre town meeting hearings that give everyone the opportunity to get better informed before meeting. And they represent, you know, an opportunity for for more understanding. So to close, I want to say a few things. You know, first is that equitable free speech is the heart of town meeting. And that our choice to listen is what binds us. We are here to both speak and to listen. Our town meeting benefits from fair and full. You know, the 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 quality of our deliberation gives better results for our town. And at the same time, many want town meeting to demand less of us. And then finally, there's aptitude, specific engagement the town meeting can't serve. And I should probably explain that as well, but thank you.
So seven minutes.
And how long do we get?
Six. Yeah.
So a couple of thoughts on the priorities, if you go back to that page.
Yeah.
You start with deliberation, participation, time, communication.
Does it flow differently?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So next slide jumps right into participation, I think, if you go at least on the town.
Yeah.
At least on the packet. How did it happen here? What's the next slide right here? Yeah, so you might want to either change the flow on this slide or rearrange the next four slides. You're hitting these in order.
So, okay, so the 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 topics here follow this this order.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One way or the other, just align it.
Yeah.
And and the other thought, and this is if it's possible to arrange.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a way to test it is put up a test question. How many of you are here for the first time with the clickers?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Is that possible to do?
Um.
Before you get up and not out of your time, it's a practice, Carmen. I don't know if that's a good way. So we get some feedback.
That is a great idea. She needs to do practice.
And you get feedback right away. Did some of our message come through?
Yeah. So just to to say that differently is, I I know that Carmen is talking about wanting to practice question. Yeah, I don't know that she's made the decision about what she wants him to be, but that would be a good one.
Or you could you can even make, you know, is this your first time meeting, second, more than three, or like, you know, then you get all the.
Sense, and then you can weave that answer in the beginning as you talk to say, hey, I see, you know, twenty percent of you here for the first time. Hopefully, our message is coming through, right?
Yeah.
And we use that to relate to the audience you're talking to.
I liked that. I think, you know, the weaving part takes CPU, so.
It's a five second connection based on results.
Good.
Yeah, it does have to be precise. Yeah, good idea.
Good, good. Thank you. Thank you. Katie, I'm just going to reach out to you because you're there. Any comments about the the presentation?
You did a great job, even though you said you haven't practiced yet. You sounded great. I did have one quite comment on kind of making the recommendations stand out. I thought like within the text, it does get a little bit lost. So I wonder if there's a way to put either like bold, specific items or put like like this, this one, I think, is very clear, but some of the other ones, it maybe do some sort of heading to make it clear what exactly the item is.
Yeah, sure. It got you there. Yeah.
And the title, I got lost between fair deliberation.
Yeah.
Which was up number. I guess. Again, go back to full and fair deliberation. That's great. That's one participation, less time communication. So one heading is participation that ties directly. Another heading is less time. And then you get fair deliberation and full deliberation. You lose the communication piece. I'm not sure if you're trying to follow and see what you did.
Yeah.
Just sort of let me think about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good.
And I don't know why voting reform, no, is considered part of full deliberation. I'm trying to make that connection in my mind, like, what is that?
Oh, yeah, because, yeah, because if we'd implemented it, there wouldn't be any, but.
Yeah, I don't think people will know what that item is when they see it. So I don't think people will understand that that's the Australian ballot item. So maybe just doing some titling to make it a little bit clearer what what they are for novices.
You just separate it.
Calling something different like voting at the at the ballot blocks or the polls instead of that town meeting.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Know what that is.
Good.
The phrase not statutory bothers me because we are asking for a change of state statute in another form of town meeting as a recommendation. And here we're saying it's a reason that we're not recommending it. I think we should delete that one.
Good. I think it would be a cert pressure.
I thought it was, because I read the our main point was philosophical. And then we said, oh, by the way, not practical in our rationale, not that it wasn't statutory and not that it's no longer legislative. Maybe that's the phrase for that.
Currently, we don't have the means to make that happen. It's usually the same question that we're being asked.
In our rationale, the paragraph we wrote, the main reason is philosophically, that we think it breaks the spirit of town meeting. And maybe that's what you mean by no longer legislature.
Yeah, dude.
But it may maybe was that first and then not practical again, because that was an afterthought for us and drop the statutory because
Okay.
to your point.
And to yours. Most people don't understand that the what the legislature is, so not what that were no longer legislature, maybe a little confusing to us.
Could I make a suggestion to your your structure? I'm going to send you completely back to the drawing board, but you only have six minutes. We have five pages in the briefing book right there, plus the whole report. It seems like maybe this six minutes should be better to say, this is what's available, five pages in your briefing book. But, you know, sixteen page report, you know, plus these other resources, and then like the key points you find, like, so I like that. You know, the purpose of it, then these were our primary recommendations and these were, you know, conceivably kind of the secondary recommendations, but then any kind of thing that you think you want them to go look for in the report, like our rationales or something, because you can't, you can't give a digest in six minutes. And so and and we don't need to because there's an entire report. So what are the like three things you want people to take away from your six minutes? And that's where that's where I would focus.
I'm thinking about that. So I think the priorities are good. I I want I want people to get that from us. You know, I want I want people to know that we heard what they said. You know, the the bit about regulars versus less frequent doesn't need to be there. Again, I think the priorities are strong. You know, I think we could skip the accommodations for disabilities, except I want to signal that it matters to this audience. Obviously, the remote participation stuff, big deal, less time.
And they're going to hear about it in another presentation.
Yeah, yeah. So all I want to say is something that we did. So less time, you know, you know, frankly, this this is all a little bit detailed. Nipping around the edges, to use your phrase, in the calories. And then a fair deliberation, I think this is a subtle point about clickers and, you know, I think we're going to have time to talk about clickers. But you know, again, passing representative town meeting might be a detail that we don't need to get into.
And to the use of the word fair, I thought about that.
Yeah.
So people may or may not object about fair. So maybe again.
What do you mean though?
Oh, I mean, clearly there are folks that view the use of the clickers as maybe not fair.
You think?
Well, I'm again, you know, that's I'm just being sensitive to other people's concerns, right?
We made the minimum.
And so that's why I think maybe not using the word fair because it's subjective.
Okay.
So.
This was the judgment of the committee.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But trying to represent.
Trying to just sort of put out objective title, right? Participation is objective, right?
Yeah.
So maybe deliberation man or something like that.
So so where you're going with there is don't use the titles full and fair. Get you in a second, Katie. Don't use the titles full and fair, but just talk about deliberation. Clickers is a change to deliberation.
Yeah.
The briefing book is a change to deliberation, so to speak. The
No Australian ballot.
We don't need to talk about it, frankly, right?
Yeah, I mean, technically, is clickers is a change to deliberation? It's not what it is.
I don't know what it is.
It's something we do during deliberation. Town meeting is all. So I don't know. Okay, just just thinking about how to compress. You know, it's to say, to get away from following your idea, you know, the major major things that we've done, right? The you know, priorities, the remote participation. The top three, remote participation, the briefing book and the clickers, which are the three marquee things.
Maybe that's maybe you have the three major things as the title and three bullets.
Right.
Right?
Right.
And then you just sort of speed philosophically.
I think.
Two of those bullets, right? And say, look, you guys know what we're doing. Here's the three major elements. And oh, by the way, next slides, five other things. We're hoping all of these are reflected in today's town meeting, right? And then they're all having time.
That tracks the the executive summary. We have.
And I think what you have the opportunity to do since you're speaking is I think it's important to say that that it was challenging to balance, you know, these things and still maintain the, you know, the purpose of town meeting.
Yeah.
Because I think that's one of the things that with the survey uncovered is that there are a lot of people who don't understand what town meeting is for. I mean, how do we legislate a hundred and thirty million dollars in a number of hours?
Good. Thank you. I want to go to Katie, please. Katie, please.
We have just two thoughts which may conflict with some of what was discussed, but if I think if you need more of a visual for your speaking points, if that will be helpful for you in your presentation, maybe it's something like either a table with our key recommendations that are maybe classified under the top headings of like the areas they fit as a way for people to kind of look at them while you're speaking about each one. So it's more condensed information. And I had, oh, and a second point was maybe not including the things we're not recommending if we are looking And I had, oh, and a second point was maybe not including the things we're not recommending if we are looking to cut time. So more of the yeses and less of the noes.
Good. Thank you.
You, uh, one, one of the things I was, as I was listening, because I, I guessed also that it would take more than, than the time that we had allotted. And a few things that are short uh cuts that I think we don't need, like that we follow the open meeting law. You know, that uh what our pointing authority was. Um, that disabilities, as, as you said earlier, you know, that's kind of a note bringer. The one phrase apart from voting reform that uh, I would urge our changing is that. The survey said that town meeting should quote, demand less of us. And that's, that's true in a certain sense, but the, the phrasing of it is um. And I don't have a good alternative to s- to suggest off the top of my head at the moment, but um.
So the language here, it's up on the screen too. Town meeting takes too much time. Town meeting takes too much effort to attend.
That's enough. That's enough.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
And, and as you said, there's differences between the regulars and the less frequent.
I'm gonna drop that.
But.
Yeah.
You, we already have to find ways to cut, so.
Yeah, yeah.
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 As for full discussion of the details of the, of the survey, new, can this help my mind?
And then I have one last suggestion, the last slide. Um, I think you're trying to do too much with it. And uh, to wrap it up, it should be like no more than two points. And shorter than this. I just tell you from doing this in trials.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I don't like to read my statements in front of a jury, but I write last two things I'm gonna say.
Right.
In conclusion, you should find this person not guilty, you know, because they, uh, you know, they have an alibi.
Right, that's.
Yeah, and, and not try to do as, as much here as you are. It might be just. In conclusion, we provided a, a, a study and a report and recommendations, and we'd like you to consider them.
And you can tell us how we did, you know, you are the judge of whether we are.
That's it. You have the QR, QR code to the survey. Just to remind them at the beginning of the meeting that there's an opportunity to give feedback on this town meeting, including some of these changes. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, there was a lot of information for me here in a second. So, so the problem with the QR code is, uh, I need to point a device at it. I think. Um, I think, you know, the simple cockardma.gov slash TM twenty-five.
Correct.
This is, is, is detailed as it.
But I mean, I would remind them, because this is the beginning of the meeting.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And we've implemented some of these recommendations at this meeting and they can.
Right.
Let us know what they thought.
Good. Thank you. Um, thank you for repeating that for me. Um, so I think.
Back to you, but I think this is another opportunity at the end to reflect back on who's there. But there's again twenty-five said there that are new, maybe say, hey, this is a great start. We have more next year. I just keep it at that.
I love it.
And keep your feedback coming.
Yeah.
And, oh, that's it.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
And if it's only five percent new, then hey, you know what? We made some small progress. We have a ways to go.
Yeah.
And keep your thoughts coming. So you just sort of close with that nice tieback to.
Sure.
Who's in front of you and what the results have been so far, without getting too much into.
So, does that make sense to me? I'll need to practice that and see if it feels organic and I, why, whatever, yeah. Um, so here on these three points then, uh, uh, Eric, this, so I'll drop the third point. Uh, uh, the second point, benefits from fair and full, and many want town meeting to demand less of us. It goes back to the language that you found problematic. And many tend town meeting to be shorter, or what? What do I say there? What language would you recommend?
Shorter and more efficient. Although I don't think you need to repeat this. I think you can just say, this is our conclusion.
Already there.
Everything, yeah, everything is in our report.
So, all right, so equitable free speech is the heart of town meeting. Our choice to listen is what binds us. How are we with that?
I think like if you want to leave, you're like, you're talking at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
If you wanna leave people with some sort of inspiring.
Yeah.
Um, well, Carmen does this also, right?
Yeah.
Does a good kind of um, try to get us on the same page. But I do think that we spent a whole year working on this and trying to balance the fact that, yes, you know, people want to demand less. And we still have all this work to get done, and we can get it done better if we listen to each other. Um, and, and decrease repetition. So I, I don't know. I think something to that effect is a good concluding point.
Okay, so, so thank you for your support in that. Uh, I'm gonna keep it and, and I'm gonna drop the last two points. Uh, uh, and put a reference to that, to the survey. Uh, yeah, David Allen, number the public.
Uh, Phil has triggered me. Uh, I would travel around the world and present academic conferences. I developed a rule for myself. I never had more than a dozen words on this slide. And the proposition is a very simple one. Uh, folks are either reading your slides or listening to you. They're not doing both, eh? The slides therefore, the mission is to support, so they have a kind of framework of ideas to follow. So they can listen to you.
Good.
Now, everybody makes their own choices, and I apologize, I didn't want to speak up, but you know, it's your fault.
All right, thank you. Um, uh, Carmen, uh, let me just go back to you and Katie as well. Any other comments before we move on?
I'm wondering if the, if the general person attending town meeting would understand what active moderation means. A moderator understands it.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering whether my mom out in the audience would understand, consider more active moderation.
I think you're right.
Good, thank you. Uh, Carmen, please.
I suppose you could use um, quote, hands-on instead of active, and people might understand that.
Ninja gavel.
Little gavel icon there, yeah. Um, cool, thank you. Uh, Katie, anything else before we move on?
Nope, nothing for me.
Cool, thank you.
I would just make the suggestion that, that I do to people all the time is when you practice, I mean literally. Stand by your microwave, push the button, and you get a. Oh, I need to spe- speed up or slow down, or I really do have to cut this or that.
I wasn't gonna say it.
I will practice this. Uh, I'll make, I'll make edits to this. I will practice it. I'll cut a video of it. Um, procedurally, you know, I, you know, I can put a link to the, to the, to my video up on the website or up on the website and share that as opposed. But um, um, I'm, I'm just wondering how I can go about getting more feedback from this group.
I think, yeah, I think we need individual feedback.
Good, yeah, yeah, there we go. So after I've done it, I'll put a video up, I'll send a link out to Shannon and uh.
Or Instagram.
What's the one that they got in trouble for?
Yeah. I don't know. Excellent. Okay, uh, moving forward now, we have another presentation. This is my adaptation of the deck that Eric Van Loon put together. Um, uh, for the, uh, select board, uh, pre-meeting hearing. Uh, and so this is, uh, again, I've got five minutes for this. We wanna run through it the same form. Um, who wants to start a timer?
I did just look at that little clock there, so.
How do you do those things? Okay. So, Article twenty-seven, remote participation in town meetings. The select board uh moves that the town take affirmative action on Articles twenty-seven as printed in the warrant. So this article would authorize the select board to petition the state legislature for special legislation to allow Concord to. Permit voters, it's a weenie-ish, to participate and vote remotely from home at town meetings. And then it's important to explain that. I'm struggling with the language, but. No, I'm, I'm doing the presentation.
Oh, okay, sorry.
But background, last year, uh, you know, we, we, town meetings launched the town meeting study committee. Uh, last year as well, we had Article twenty-eight, a citizen petition for remote participation at a town meeting that was given to us to consider, and we did. Um, we had a thousand, uh, townwide survey, a thousand responses, a huge number of comments. Uh, and, you know, what came back to us, uh, was that for many, have been barriers to town meeting participation. Uh, they wanna participate, but they find it difficult to attend in person. It's fifty percent overall of the voters, uh, uh, you know, we think of the sort of, you know, parent age. Seventy-five percent, uh, eighty percent with caregiving responsibility. There are huge barriers uh for attending town meeting. Uh, for major chunks of our, our population. So, you know, things are different than they were. Hybrid uh meetings are the new normal for, for, for uh, uh, many of our working lives. Uh, and in the survey, I wanna get to this quicker, actually, is it nearly eighty percent of the survey respondents favored being able to deliberate and vote remotely. On issues during town meeting. This is the hybrid option, which we don't have the right to do. Current state law does not permit this. Requires only in-person attendance to vote at open town meeting. So the process is that we can seek permission uh from the state through a, a mechanism called a home rule petition with the state legislature. Um, on this, only the select board can initiate it, and we at town meeting have to approve it. So this initiative, I'm gonna skip this slide, I think, um, but this desire that we have for open, for, for. Uh, 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 remote participation and voting is, is echoed by others across the state. And in terms of what's happening at the state level, uh, there's support for hybrid meetings as well. So what needs to happen for us to get there? So we need, number one, an affirmative town meeting vote, authorizing the select board to make this action. The select board, which is sponsoring this article, needs to vote to file the home rule petition. And then our state legislature, uh, our state legislators will support, uh, this should be a fourth step there. Our state legislators will support or advocate for us, the state legislature, and then they need to vote for us. Our legislators, Simon Cattaldo, Carmen Gentile, and Mike Barrett, uh, all have endorsed this action for us. Uh, again, this is a very detailed slide. Uh, and no, but let me just come back to some unknowns, right? We don't know when the legislature will approve this. Um, we don't know how exactly we'll operate remote participation and voting at town meeting. Uh, and I have to say that a hybrid meeting, as many of us have experienced, is different than being completely in person. Uh, so the trade-off is that, you know, certainly increased participation, but we don't know the effect on deliberation. Uh, and over, and, and I won't use the word gestalt, but the overall gestalt or, or comedy, the community feeling of being a town meeting will be with a hybrid meeting as well. So there are unknowns. But we come back to, uh, our committee strongly recommended, uh, moving forward with this. Uh, um, we are seeking for Concord a right to try something, and the balance is great promise for a much more inclusive town meeting. And so we ask for your support in this article. It's gotta be eight minutes.
No.
Those four minutes? Yeah, but you can eliminate two of those minutes, because the first three or four slides, you will have said at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, you've already talked about the survey, so, you know, and you've already, uh.
Why we got established, the fact that this question was on our charge.
And we have a thousand voters that were.
Yeah, just say as a reminder, I told you about our background. We're here to talk about one of those recommendations.
Let's agree with you, because this will be on night two or night three, and we're gonna, our first thing is gonna be at night one.
I'm not so sure. I mean, look.
He did it, it's also, it's also.
But he, but he was fast-paced. I think I would slow down on.
Yeah.
Right?
Definitely. You can't be speaking right next, right, right next to people the whole time, because you'll never do it in the meeting and you'll get a false.
So that's why I think, look, even if it's the next day, can remind people that at the top of the meeting. We talked about why, why we're here, and you don't have to read from the slides.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We, I just. Why we're here with the.
I wanna go to Katie, please. Uh, Katie?
Um, yeah, I agree with a lot of what people are saying. I think we just need a very brief background. I think this is something that people very clearly want. So I don't think there's going to need to be a lot of convincing about it. I think the important piece is how it happens. That people don't know and how it starts with this vote. Um, and I also think the legislative currents that is probably, I think, beyond the interest of uh, the meeting. But I think it's just brief background. Um, this is what we're asking. This is how it happens. Uh, some of the unknowns, because it is un- uncertain whether that would actually end up happening. But, um, yeah, that was my thought.
Yeah, and I would get to the unknowns for early on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just set the overall.
I, I thought you did a great job with that slide.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
When, when you explain that, that's your, that's your uh groove, uh, explaining that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So, um, and I thought the state law slide was to this, this one.
Yeah.
Um, too much information. And I, I think all you need to do is say, we just need state law. It doesn't, it's not allowed. Uh, you don't have to get into the whole select board.
We got the steps to go through, so.
You could number the steps.
Well, they are. And three of them.
I think, I think that's the more important part.
Yeah, one, two, three.
Yeah, I'm not sure we need legislative currents, but it's, you know.
Yeah, I think we don't. I wouldn't have our three legislatures for, for this. In the background, the hearing.
Yeah.
Where we're going, we're in the detail with stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but town meeting.
And even the groundwork should be upfront, like, out of the way, because it was already done last year, right?
It was a very different.
Working on it. You don't even need the slide. You just have it up front and just talk to it.
So let's go back through this speed by speed, article explanation. Um, um, I've struggled with this. I can break it up a bit, but. Uh, uh, is this too technical?
No.
To permit to voters to participate, I would simply just to allow. To allow voters.
Yeah.
To participate and vote.
Yeah.
You don't need Concord and you don't need.
And you don't need to permit.
Yeah.
Just be shortened up.
Right, for special legislation to allow voters to participate and vote.
But stick in the word conquered, because the whole essence of this.
It's only conquered.
It's only conquered. We're not trying to change.
It's in the weed, right?
Hey, Katie, just, just pipe up.
Okay, sure. Will do. Um, my, I, I'll just wait for my comment to get to the slide that you were talking about before.
Uh, background, so, so I heard you saying, look, you know, we, we kinda did this, so, so. Um, survey, uh, kinda did this, so cut that as well.
So what somebody else said earlier.
Uh huh.
If you want one slide with three bullets.
Uh huh.
Combine those three slides into three bullets and then just speak to it very quickly. Reference the conversation from last night.
Yeah, so, so, um, uh, I'm gonna cut this slide, I'm gonna cut this slide. And, uh, you know, the survey told us.
Right.
Uh, uh, I think, you know, I can simplify this as well.
The bullets don't help, I don't think. Their point is that there are, people have many different reasons they found it difficult to attend, but universally. People of all ages found it difficult to attend.
Yeah. Um, I'd like a stronger word than many, if I'm gonna cut the numbers here.
Some sample majority.
That's too many words for me, yeah.
Most, most people?
Yeah, that's a pure word to me.
Yeah, okay. Good, thank you. Uh, hybrid and new normal, uh, I think, you know, I think what I'll do, um, is drop this slide. Uh, I, I can take this here, nearly eighty percent resp- you know, favored, uh, and fold this into this slide as well. Uh, because they say the same thing, right? You know, everybody's got a hard time. And, uh, the solution for that hard time is this, in, in, in terms of the survey.
Yeah, wouldn't you use the word hybrid on a slide anywhere? You're using your talk track.
Yeah.
But we always reference remote participation.
Yeah.
I mean, we ought to just stick to that versus introducing a new word of hybrid.
A new normal is not necessarily, everybody, not, there, there may be some people disagree.
Yeah, yeah.
That is not the new normal.
Okay.
The new no, everything's the same. It hasn't changed.
I'll note that this, this is a change that I made to Eric's deck, so he's not on this.
And, and it's, that's a good point. We don't need all the details now. This is just to start the process.
Yeah.
There's so much more time to come back and talk about hybrid versus, you know.
Um, I know there, so this is the slide I had comments on, um, that you just flipped to. So I, I actually really like this slide, because I don't think this is well-understood by the people not involved in the committee. And very much new people. So I thought this was actually a very good, like, easy, basic level. This isn't allowed, and so we need to. Basic level. This isn't allowed. And so we need to do this thing to make this happen. And I don't think people understand.
I agree, and I think a fundamental element of it is people think, what, what's wrong with conquered? We should just. You know, the select board should just change this or whatever. But if the fundamental is we gotta go to the legislature.
That should be on slide three, the background, where you say last year. The, you, our meeting created us.
Yeah.
One of the items was to allow remote participation, which state law doesn't allow right now. Can you just say that up front? You don't need the slide.
Yeah.
Or, maybe not, I would, I would even shorten that and just say, I put it in front and say, current law requires in-person attendance.
Yeah, good.
You don't want that, you don't want that. We're gonna ask for the permission to attend.
Yeah.
Something like that. But that ought to go right up front.
I agree.
And I don't know if you need to have the select board on here.
No, I agree with you. I think this, this slide will reduce to one sentence, which is whatever it was that Alice just said, the current law requires in-person attendance.
I think it's two sentences. The first sentence of the second paragraph too needs to be in there. You have to do this through a home rule petition. Those words. I like the way you have it highlighted there, uh, to so long understand. This is a, you know, sort of a funky process.
So, so, okay, so I agree with you. Current, current law requires in-person attendance at open to vote at open town meeting. So it's more or less the first sentence.
Yeah.
To change this, we need a home rule petition.
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
So, and then, and then process.
I would go back to your stuff, from state, from the legislature, I mean, make sure you put that in.
Okay, so to change this, we need a home rule petition, uh, approved by the state legislature.
Something like that, yes.
Uh, yeah.
Um, I'm gonna drop the groundwork slide altogether, uh, and then, uh, the process is this. Uh, you know, we vote, uh, town meeting votes, the select board votes to file. And then the state legislature needs to approve it. Um, no, it could add a step between two and three, which is that representatives go advocate for us.
No, it's not a voting step.
Yeah.
Okay, you're right.
Not a voting step.
Okay, I'm gonna cut this slide altogether.
Okay, yeah.
It is important before we go onto the next one, I mean, I think you know this, Eric, but, uh, the select board can't file. A home rule petition without town meeting, so it, it, a town meeting vote is required to kick it off.
Good.
Just in case, you know, that comes up or whatever.
Right, good, good. Uh, so I'm gonna drop legislative currents, um, the unknowns, uh, I think, um. Uh, feel okay about that. There's a lot of words on this, but, but.
So what, I mean, about why unknowns is important to have in, we're, we're making a statement arguing in support of this. Uh, remote participation. And so, um. You know, get the caveats may not help our argument to say we support this because we think this is the right solution.
Yeah, unknowns might not be the right heading. I think the, the way you describe this is good. But maybe don't use the word unknowns, but maybe something else.
About setting expectations.
Issues?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the most important thing on the slide for, for me and probably a lot of people is that we don't know when this will happen. I think there is some assumption that, that probably that this could be very quick and a thing that changes next year. But to say like, this is a longer process, the other things I can take it or leave it probably.
Yep.
So how about if I said it's a process as in lieu of unknowns?
No, I didn't.
So what are we trying to do here on this slide?
Uh, so yeah, I don't want to oversell this.
That's our job.
So that's why setting expectations. You're not overselling. This is what they, we're doing this.
But our job is to sell Article twenty seven.
Do them, but you don't come back six months later.
That's, that's true. We're, we're, we are giving a statement in favor.
Yes.
We are urging affirmative action and our job is to tell all the reasons why. It's not necessarily. They say, oh, by the way, there's a whole lot of reasons why you should.
I disagree, I disagree. I think there is concern over, over what this will do to our town meeting. And the answer is we don't exactly know, but we think it's a good thing to try.
That's what deliberation is for. That's what the other people get up with other points of view and speak against it. But the, the advocates for the, the, uh, article. And, and again, it's a time issue in part. Uh, if you spend a lot of time and, yeah, I, I, we could, we could slip it in. But, uh.
I'm very, very leery to oversell this, right? We don't know when it's gonna happen. We don't know how it's gonna work. And we don't really know what the effect is gonna be on meeting.
Boy, that was a great way, if you, if you just said it just that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would have been great.
I, I would also avoid increased participation, but decreased attention. If you look around at the audience. People are knitting, reading books, you know, talking to their neighbors. We don't know how attentive everyone is.
Absolutely.
I don't even know what the community means. I mean, what, does that mean?
Immunity.
Yeah, I, I think that, but.
I know, that's a college word, right? It shouldn't be there, you're right.
But community, I mean, I, there is a great sense of people coming together by the hundreds.
Yeah, sure.
And seeing each other and being part of, uh, part of a gathering.
Right.
Yeah.
And, uh, that will be diminished to, to at least some extent, I, I think.
Potentially, yeah. Uh, Carmen, let me go to you, please.
I, I just wanted to note, um, one interesting thing is that we have, um, three articles on the warrant. That are asking the select board to seek special legislation, um, home rule petition, uh, legislation from the legislature. So this will be the first one of them that comes up. The other two are ranked choice voting and, um. Regulation of ESGARS, second gen, and anti-coagulants, rat poisons. Um, so, um, you, you know, in the context, uh, of. Uh, it's just an interesting context because we have a, a variety of ways in which, as a town, we're trying to push the envelope. And, uh, claim for ourselves at the local level, more authority than the state has given us.
I'm thinking about that. Um, so, uh, the rank choice article, uh, is gonna be right after this one, I think. Twenty eight, I think it is.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
Isn't twenty six the rat poison?
No, it's later than that.
Thirty six?
Oh, thirty six. I was close.
I'll observe the Chase Thompson's joint as well. Um, hi Chase. So, uh, so, so I'm stuck on this word unknowns. I'll have to think about what to do there. Um, I, I believe the slide belongs, but.
Expectations or.
Setting expectations.
Yeah.
It said, we, we're not setting expectations. We're just.
What to expect.
We're just kind of describing them.
Yeah, um, I'll get there with that. Um. So a lot of words in this one. I think, you know, I like your phrase, talk track, um, but, um, I think this is the point. You know, the, the one, the, the, the button that, you know. Is we're seeking for Concord to write to try something that under the balance is great promise for a more inclusive town meeting. That's the one thing that, uh, uh, I'd like.
I like that.
Yeah, supporting Articles twenty seven, we're seeking for conquered.
The first bullet point, though, is the same as the third bullet.
Yeah, I know, I know. I can go. It's gonna, it's gone, it's out of here.
Okay.
Yeah, good. All right, thank you. Um, uh, any other comments on this before we move forward? You had something, David Allen, member of the public?
Thanks. Uh, it goes back just a bit to the conversation, uh, something you said, uh, you felt strongly about. Looking at how probably the unknowns fly in here. Uh, you say it gently, but. As I see it, you're establishing your modifying by being straight. I think what the negatives are as well as the positives. You don't say all the negatives. That's not the point. You just establish that you're here to give folks the facts.
Hmm.
And when you consider the facts, including these negatives, you came out here. Establishing yourself as not a salesman and as folks who look hard.
Hmm.
I think there's a thing more fundamental than that. Trying to say it gently, but, but.
Good, thank you, thank you. Uh, okay, moving forward, um, thank you everyone for your comments. Are we doing on time? Uh, I can't.
Eight oh four.
Super. Uh, okay, so back to, uh, our agenda. So the third thing for town meeting, uh, is, um. Uh, the clickers motion, and I put a lot of material in the packet around this because, um. Uh, if I, if I have to stand up and defend clickers, I want to make sure that my talking points are in order. And I'm also representing the work of the committee, so I'd like to do that accurately. So, so this, I don't expect to, to go through this at meeting, but just to summarize my understanding as to where we're at. Um, you know, uh, uh, and if folks read through the deck on this or not, okay. Yeah, so, so, uh, you know, I support the moderator's choice to, to, you know. Uh, to have a discussion in terms of the rule of the meeting. Uh, so that's all good. Um, so what I tried to do, uh, is to roll up what I understood to be different concerns from the public. Uh, David Allen and I have had some back and forth around, uh, his articulation of concerns.
And thanks very much.
Yeah, um, um, the, uh, uh, email from, uh, it was Sue Felsham, I believe it was. Uh, at length, uh, uh, you know, again, quite similar to David's. And in terms of feeling, you know, the survey wasn't what it, what it could have been, uh, uh, issues around tech as well. So I wanted to, uh, uh, you know, do a fair job of, of addressing these points if they're raised. Uh, and, you know, so just to go, to go through this, right? Um, relative to the, the, the raised stats, you know, clickers are slower. Um, my, my estimate is about ten minutes for three hour session more time. And that's, you know, if there's no counts, right? Counts happen only rarely, true, right? Uh, um, so, but when they do happen, they take a really long time, uh, and so on. So, uh, process and tech, you know. The survey support for clickers was not valid because the question was inept, uh, you know, I remember.
I'm sorry, can we just go back to the last sentence of that pretty soon?
Sure.
So I, I think the truly part, I think, is also actually true.
Uh huh.
I think, but the last one, I think we're speculating as to why it's rare.
You know, I've had my votes changed because of watching what other people were doing. Um, so was my experience, but, but, but to your point, it may not generalize robustly.
So maybe not speculate, cause there could be other reasons, right?
Yeah.
The fact is, it's rare. We don't really know why it's.
Sure.
Just kind of leave it at that, right?
Don't speculate. Good. Carmen, please.
Yeah, I just want to point out that there's a difference between a count and a paper ballot. Counts only happen when the moderator, uh, cannot visually call the vote because it's too close. Um, and a paper ballot is the thing that people would ask for and it's very slow. So, want to mix those two concepts.
Yeah, I mean, they're both psychic. I mean, they're both slow, one's a lot slower.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Um.
I'm a little hesitant to say ten minutes per.
Yeah.
Three hour session, cause we, we really don't have any, we haven't discussed that. Oh, well, but apart from that, it's really speculative.
It is an estimate. It's totally an estimate. We don't know that exactly. But, you know, if you go something this fast, now it takes about a minute and we do that about ten times a night, it's about ten minutes longer.
So I.
So.
So just say, just say perhaps.
I, I wonder about the level of detail needed here, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know, um, uh, I was just listening to the League of Women Voters, uh, you know, uh, hearing your reviews about this stuff. And Eric, um, Dahlberg from the Finance Committee kind of summed up. And I know they didn't make the recommendation, they just kind of weighed in on, um, whether they're gonna support affirmative action or not. And there was several split votes.
This one?
No, but I just start, so for example, and so he was able to summarize, this is why the majority was in favor of supporting affirmative action. And this is why the, um, there was dissent type thing, it was a differing opinion, but I thought he did it, encapsulated it kind of. Um, in a way that presented the things without getting into the details.
Uh huh.
And I realized that this is different because this is actually our recommendation, but our recommendation is also detailed in writing that, the thing that they're holding. And so I, and, and I think the deliberation is gonna primarily come from the audience, you know, so I, I just wonder if this could be a high level, you know. That comes out of the report practically, like these are the reasons we were, that could be recommended it, one, two, three.
Right.
And these were the considerations, you know, that, that represent the minority.
But these are your potential answers to Q and A's that come up, right?
Yeah, right. That's, these are, these are.
I don't think he's going through.
And so you're saying like, if.
Someone's gonna say, we don't count all that often. We don't, secret ballots all that often.
And, and you, and you would like to, like, if somebody says that, you would like to kind of offer information about that? And I guess that's what I'm a little concerned about.
It's true. We don't, we don't do those counts all that frequently.
I think, I think what, I think what you're preparing, and I think you should have some talking points.
Uh.
If folks have questions, Carmen will typically turn to the chair of the committee to answer the question.
That's true.
Yeah.
Right, and so I think we, when I saw these talking points.
Yeah.
As potential answers to questions that might come up.
Right.
He addresses the question, he's got the answer in his mind, and he sits down.
Okay, so you're gauging the frequently asked questions. One would be, how much time can we save or how much time does it cost?
Extra time, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then what about the other ones? Cause the other ones have a lot of information on them.
Yeah.
And these, you would just be talking, you wouldn't be pulling up slides, right?
Yeah, so, so counts happen only rarely, true, right? Uh, when they happen, they take a long time, but they don't happen all that much. Um, so, uh, uh, um, you know, both Sue Felsham and I believe David, uh, Allen. Uh, you know, the, the question was bad on the survey. Um, you know, we don't know, right? We don't know why people chose clickers on the survey. Uh, we do know that there was strong support for that. Uh, um, you know, the survey was bad because the survey is biased. So, you know, the survey was canvassed, I, I won't say all of this, but I want to make the point that the survey was canvassed the way that. We canvassed for town meeting or election. Notice we sent people who were interested, showed, you know, chose to participate. Um, you know, the, I need to make sure that the survey response rate is accurate relative to the overall registered voters for twenty twenty four. Um, um, so this number may change, but, you know, our judgment is that it was a pretty good response. Uh, uh, relative to the people who are actually interested in town meeting. Uh, and that, you know, in terms of the overall level of concern, uh, what we saw near thirty percent is actually consistent with. An independent survey from thirty years ago, uh, and some of the belief is that, that underlying attitude is, is, is robustly estimated.
I think it's important when, if, when there's discussion about, uh, whether the respondents are representative.
Hmm.
Uh, that we make the very clear point.
Yeah.
That the people who responded skews much more heavily toward people who come to town meeting.
Right.
Than to those who are at home and, and never participate. And we do have sort of firm numbers that support that.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, and we see town meetings where we get three percent turnout, right? So this is a pretty robust number relative to that as well. Um, and then, you know.
But I mean. Not just that it's, you know, seven percent or ten percent compared to three percent.
It's a big over.
But it's, but it's that.
Yeah.
Yeah, of the people who responded to the survey said they come virtually every time.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, so that's, uh, greatly over represents the registered voters. We never get that kind of, uh, of a number. And at the other end of the spectrum, exactly the same thing.
Hmm.
There were about a fifth of the respondents who said, we never come.
But we'd like to, yeah.
Well.
It's easier to say like to, if you like to, you find a way.
Yeah.
But, but in fact, the people who never come are clearly.
Right.
More than fifty, that probably sixty, seventy percent.
Yeah.
Or, and then again, I, I just, you know, well, you don't have to throw the number down. Yes, we don't know how representative it is. The fact is, it was eight or nine percent of the people.
Right.
Well, and it gets, it's, it's more people who participate than who don't.
And I guess I just don't know how clarifying this is for the general audiences listening. That's what I'm curious about, yeah.
Depends on.
If the question is about representation, that we grappled with that in almost a whole meeting, what do we mean by representative? Is it by district, by income, by education? You know, we didn't, we didn't actually define it for ourselves, so it's be difficult to define it. At town meetings.
Right.
But, but this is to answer the question like, hey, you want to use clickers because your survey, you know, a, a majority of survey respondents. Said that, what if, what if the survey is flawed? This, that's what we're trying to respond to.
That it wasn't about survey, basically.
Okay.
Uh, um, and then finally, you know, uh, electronic voting systems may not be secure or accurate. Um, you know, they're engineered to do both, uh, and, you know, from, from the wide deployments that we've seen, at least that the state has seen. Uh, we haven't surfaced any evidence that there's problems.
That would always surprise.
I don't know if, uh, I thought, I don't think you have one in here, but about the eight out of the ten pounds. Surrounding, I don't, I don't use clickers successfully.
Um. Um.
We have five.
Um, I think I might have that, actually. Yeah.
It's in these?
Might be, uh, it might be, yeah. Yeah, it is, I flas- so privacy. Um, you know, so the point, right, open town meeting is a legislature, legislators vote in public. Uh, and I want to say that elected town meeting members, representative town meeting members, have public accountability. Uh, I recall someone making this point in very sort of pungent terms, you know, that in one of our meetings, it is a private citizen, I'm accountable to me. Right? And I will say that nobody takes an oath that I don't head up in town meeting. Um, um, so the expectation.
I thought Carmen asked us to do something in the beginning.
Well, so Carmen is an indication.
She asked her ability.
An indication. There's no oath. There's no.
Okay.
You know, there's an, an ask, which is a great ask, but it's not an oath.
Okay.
I don't find that one particularly strong.
Okay, that's all right, fine.
The thing, though, that I think is awful is private voting, we do all the time, and nobody questions it. We go to the ballot box.
Uh huh.
So like, you know, it's not like it's separate to have everybody know, yeah, that's after same time, you know?
Well, I mean, I just, I guess, I feel like in some of the things you're, you're doing here, um, I think you're, you're trying to represent what we deliberated about and kind of presented. But that's all in our, in the written documentation that we done. This almost seems like what's going to happen at the.
At deliberation.
Deliberation. So I mean, I'm, I'm just kind of having, uh, it seems like you're going to get a platform to.
I, I worry, I worry frankly that, you know, I'll have to respond to questions from the floor.
I.
And I want to say, you know, I want to be both accurate and persuasive.
Okay.
And well, accurate persuasive, well, accurate intelligible and persuasive.
I mean, are you willing to represent the minority view of the committee also?
Yes. I just, I need to make sure that I know what that is.
I mean, it's in, in the board.
Okay. Well, I tried to in, in putting this together, I tried to reflect that, so, but, but.
No, I just want to make you do more work if we already had it, you know?
You know, the Finance Committee, people that are dissenting, voices could get up and talk.
Mm hmm. No, but I thought it was nice.
They're going to their own, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I thought it was, I think it's nice. Anyway, I think you can get most of the stuff from, from the report, and it's kind of concisely written.
Yeah.
And you could just, because they were not going to read it right there, but you could.
Yeah.
And read it into the record.
But finding it on the spot is.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, you, you could prepare it from, from the report.
Yeah.
If that's the statements that you want to make type thing.
Okay, okay.
So you might think, yeah, I would just say, you could think about how to frame this in the way of a question that you're being asked and stand up and speak to. And if this, if that format works for you, it doesn't for me, but it may for you.
Okay.
Um.
Okay.
I would frame the question that I'm answering.
Uh huh.
Thank you.
I'm looking at the litigator over there.
Uh, I understand exactly what you're doing, so, uh, and I think this would be helpful for you. You're not gonna, you're not gonna show this to anybody.
Right, so whatever works for him.
Answer questions.
So I thought there was, good.
Yes, okay.
These are points to remember.
Yep.
In case you gotta get up and.
Yeah.
Well, your mind goes blank, you have something to look at.
Yeah, 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 it will, no doubt.
We all need that.
So, okay.
And I think I'll I'll take the view that open town meeting is a forum. It's primarily a decision making body, a legislature. It's a form for accommodating difference. In other words, that, uh, you know, we may disagree. But in and we could leave the meeting disagreeing as well, but our vote is an accommodation of our differences. And that I think is fundamentally with the what the town meeting is about. Uh, yeah, resolution of difference, you know, the, the, the work that we do to understand each other, to identify difference, to understand our different points of view. Um, to, to look for different ways to resolve those differences is negotiation. You know, that, that, you know, that happened to do that on a clock is difficult. To do it at town meeting is even harder. So I think, you know, that we have a decision making mechanism at town meeting. That allows us again to accommodate difference is very different than being able to get to the root of difference and resolve them. And I think accommodation is the right, is the right way to think about our work at town meeting.
I think that's the right, the right word. I think that. One of the things that we have to face is generally speaking, by the time something gets to town meeting. Things are things. What's going to be voted on has been decided. There are from time to time amendments which are important, but that's. The clear major minority of the times and. The, the, the truth is that on controversial things. Um, a lot of people go home who were in the minority. Not with their mind changed that they were wrong, but just. We got outvoted, you know, whether it's, uh, plastic water bottles or, uh, uh. Leaf blowers or, you know, you can go through the list of the thirty things through the year where. People go away, they, they've had an art. We've had an articulation of different points of view and some give and take.
Right.
Um, but it's not like a contra- compromise actually gets worked out on the floor most of the time.
Yeah. So, so the idea that a vote that's been unbiased by observers. Is a more accurate expression of the public will makes it perhaps a little bit easier to accept that I lost on that one.
I'm sorry, say that part again?
So a private vote, right? So it's not me looking over your shoulder. It's you voted what you thought.
Yeah.
Right? We all did that. I happened to lose on that issue, but I know that people were not being pressured because they had a private vote.
Sure, I mean. But so can we go, we'll go back to slide that you have there, cause I don't quite get the second bullet. When's accommodating difference? Cause at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Unless there's a compromise, which most of the time there isn't, not really accommodating differences.
So, so.
It's a forum for deliberation. It's a forum, but I don't know that it's accommodating differences. What does accommodating mean in this context?
How do we live with our differences? Uh, you know, so, so we have a, a question of action.
Right.
Right?
We make a decision.
We made a decision and we made a decision by voting. It was a majority vote.
Okay, but that doesn't accommodate my difference. I could still lose a water bottle thing, right?
So, so I was.
You still don't sign?
Well, there's not though, right? I mean, you know, we have a, we have a proposition, right? To vote, vote this thing affirmative or not.
Right.
Right? So, so, and the outcome is a majority vote.
Sure.
So, so I'm on one side, you're on the other. We have a different point of view about that.
Right, but how did it accommodate the differences we had?
Well, we made a decision accommodating our different points of view.
You're, you're kind of repeating it, but we still don't.
I don't think he means accommodating is settling differences. It's just, it's a way of accommodating two different viewpoints and making a decision.
Right, not settling. And I think about resolve is settling as well. This is how do we live with difference? In this instance, we had a vote and, and you guys won. So that's the difference that we live with.
Like a, like a football game is a way of accommodating two different teams.
And understanding.
For facilitating or something, but they're not accommodating to me. Just like it's a compromise or we've come halfway or something.
It's not accommodating.
I don't, I don't, I don't know that, that you are going to have to address this. I think this is going to be addressed by the deliberation. I guess is what I'm thinking.
Sure.
But he might get asked.
But what, what would the question you be asking?
Carmen would say, well, did you just hear how, um, this, this ruins the whole legislative process? What's your answer?
And that doesn't seem like something that Carmen would.
Sorry, if, if you rest, it's something we can say, hey. What, what, what were the considerations you gave, right?
That's.
And then he could get up and, right? And yes, you can tell him to refer to page three.
So I'd like to go to David Allen. Um, David, you know, you and I have had a fair amount of correspondence on this. Uh, um, you know, you've seen, you've seen my slides on this. Uh, what comments do you check, care, do you choose to share?
The most important thing to notice is. Eric has taken, he's given leadership on it to address these concerns from. Me, but actually a whole bunch of people out there. That speaks to the quality of the work that this committee has done over here. And especially that Eric shared some of this with Eric. That really has got to be the starting point here. And I would say so, other venues besides people or whatever. I want to notice that logically, there is one thing at stake in this discussion that's going on right now in the group. And that's the question of whether or not the vote ever changes. Where somebody might have been falling, let me admit, when they finally get around to vote. And I'm going to say it's a quite strong thing, but it's. Logically, very good to, if nobody changes any votes, there's no reason to have town meeting. And if therefore, uh, there is a reason and votes do change and they do. Or when I sat there and listened, yeah, you change your vote. And we're hardly alone if you. Discuss a bunch, you know, I started with Arthur Stevenson. It goes back some years, some long years, actually. I was responsible for the. Secret ballot for Arthur. At the end of his tenure, fabulous guy, it's a place on bond, sadly. Uh, I went to Ned, Eric, Eric fired me because I was outspoken. Then I am, as people aren't proud where, sure Eric was quite right there doing that. Hand it off to my. My right hand, David Carr, who does it today, our Carmen. Point is, there's a long, long history there, hardly along with our regulars. We know that the only reason to pump a town meeting is because. There can be discussion which leads to an outcome that's different when folks walk through. So. That has got to be the starting point. It makes sense of this. Therefore, something does go on there besides just a vote. That I think is the only useful con- contribution I can make. I just had enough sleep last night, sorry. Useful contribution I can make to the conversation I have right now. I will, let me come back to pretty there. At a later point suggest where I think. The matter actually pivots here. I don't think it pivots on that. This, what I've just said establishes that, yes, but there has to be. Only deliberation or meeting to make any sense, but I don't think that's what fundamentally they should. Thanks for giving me the opportunity. I'll come back.
Sure.
Thank you. Let me just say thank you to the whole committee and to you. For a remarkable piece of work here.
Well, so we can agree. Uh, thank you, thank you. Um, okay, so, so, uh, last slide in clickers. So what if we do, right? Any towns like Concord use them? That's the eight around us. You know, a lot of the towns in Massachusetts, seventy or so out of, I don't know what it is, around two hundred and forty. Uh, positive outcomes, low regret. I mean, Carlisle loves them. Um, yeah, well, we'll see what happens, right? Do they make town meeting better or worse? Uh, and you know, we'll have an opportunity to take a survey at the end, at the end of this town meeting, thanks to, thanks to Katie's survey. Uh, and you know, I'll say as well that Concord's moderators have a long tradition of learning from experience so that, that. It's not like, you know, if they're bad, we're going to live with them forever. And, you know, really, right? I mean, you know, this is a pretty dynamic and adaptable group that we've had for moderators. And if we don't, well, the status quo is a raised paper slips. And you know, again, if we need counts, they'll, they'll take time if we need them. Uh, and the final point is that we've already paid for this year's rental and spent their time to prepare. And you know, if we don't use them this year, we don't learn anything. So, so in terms of framing, again, what have we done? Again, these are, um, um, my talking points, as it were. Uh, I would express them in my language and hopefully in a, in a way that's easier, you know, clear, clear. Uh, but this is what I put together in terms of my perspective, my attempt. To represent the views of the committee and my attempt to speak to what I believe. Are points that, that, you know, both are critical that proposition could raise.
So I think this is a really good thing to have done and a really good thing for us to have.
Yeah.
And I would guess that. Since this is not like there's some body of technical expertise like zoning or whatever. That it's more likely that, that Carmen as moderator would be calling on people pros and cons. Um, and that's how a lot of the, the back and forth rather than.
Yeah.
Calling on you over and over again to sort of answer whatever.
Yeah, frankly, I don't want to stand up and like, oh, yeah, clickers, man. You know, I, I think, but, but if the question comes to me, then I want to be able to answer fairly and accurately. So Kristen, um, did, is there stuff that, that, uh, you feel I should have addressed in any of this?
Um, no, not necessarily. I just, I'm just having a hard time seeing just what you said, so you will find out. I think as long as you're representing what we discovered as a committee, that's fine.
Okay, and this seems like I've done a fair job of representing that.
I think so.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, Carmen, I see your hand, please.
When you are ready, I have a report from the Carlisle moderator.
All right.
Yay.
All right. Um, so I think.
I think.
So my only question about this, thank you, is, um, the question that we might be asked. And we have had different conversations in this committee over the last year about is. Is this a forever decision or is this a pilot? We have said this is not a pilot. We're getting clickers. And I want to make sure, do we still say that this is not a pilot? That we are now saying, even though we rented them this year, we're going to try them out. That we're not making a long-term commitment to using them forever.
I, that's not up to this committee.
It's a deployment question. Deployment is up to the town, right?
It's just how, if that's the question we're asked. By, by somebody, is this a one-year decision I'm making tonight about using clickers?
Right.
Or is this?
Yeah.
No, or is this from now on?
That's, that's the rule of the meeting.
In our report, I don't think we framed it as a pilot.
No. We did not address.
The short answer is no, it's not a pilot from our perspective. Whatever other people choose to do in the future.
So we should, that, I just, in case the question comes up from somebody about. Is this now a permanent change from now on? We will be using clickers and it's in our opinion. This is the way that we believe that we've answered and been responsive to people requests for us, um, for town meeting.
Right.
Right.
It's, you know, so it's not a, we have said consistently that this is not a pilot, even when we've talked about it, we said no, but this is a decision. That we're making about the future of town meeting.
Yeah.
And having said that, if the very early discussion votes down the rule of the meeting. The moderator and the.
So does the committee get to go home at that point?
Yes.
People have voted down the school, but he went to many, they left the building. We cut two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
This is a struggle over the superintitism before.
So, so if we lose, we have to do another year as a committee. Carmen, I'd love to hear about Carlisle, please.
Very good. So, um, Wayne Davis, who is the moderator in Carlisle, says that. Uh, they had the highest attendance at town meeting that they've had since they voted to fund construction of the high school. Uh, and there wasn't anything on the warrant that would have caused him to expect that. He says normally one would expect two hundred to two hundred and fifty people, three hundred would have been a surprise. Uh, but they had three hundred and eighty-one, um, voters attend. Um, so that suggests that the format caused a, um, not insignificant increase in attendance. Um, he could not say anything about demographics, however. He does say they seem to get a good supply of first timers at town meeting. Uh, they are going to be doing some comparative analysis of demographics. The meeting did go long. It went six hours, which is long for them. There was, however, relatively little repetitive debate. And in the moderator's view, it was a higher quality of discussion. He notes, uh, Wayne Davis does, that their study committee will be meeting Thursday evening at seven. Uh, and they will be doing a hybrid meeting, so any of, um, our town meeting study committee members. Who wish to attend their meeting to, um. Uh, listen to their discussion about it are welcome, uh, to do so. They're also. They also have surveys out, um, to various constituencies. And they'll be digesting the information and figuring out what they've learned and they are happy to share.
Cool, thank you. I've talked with a couple of those people as well, so, uh, thank you.
Family Day.
Okay, um, thank you, Carmen.
Food trucks.
Food trucks, lots of them. I think that they have.
So website, so Shannon today updated the website. I don't know if anybody's looked at it, our, our committee webpage. Uh, what do I do to do that? Uh, but anyhow, she did it. Did a great job. Uh, thank you. I don't know if you want to comment on that at all or, or, so. I'll say one thing before cutting you off, which is just that not all, not, not everything is up on the website yet. Uh, but there's a lot of, we had a lot of material up there. The committee report's up there now. Um, um, there are some things that I'm, I'm working on providing over the course of the week. Uh, but basically that, that's the. That's the, the, the put to bed website page, so. Um, so thank you.
That's all I was going to say too. I'm missing a few links right now, but once he's done.
Placeholders.
Once he's done, just throw the links in.
There was a study committee in twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
We kept referencing the ninety-six one.
No, the twenty fourteen was town governance.
That's. Yeah. It was town governance.
Yeah, ninety-six is the.
Yeah.
Town meeting.
Um, uh, so, uh, I sent out, um, uh, a write-up on the survey, uh, attitudes from the survey. If anybody's looked at that, any comments on that?
Was that? Long thing.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, did this participation study again, uh, summer? So I, I looked at, um, uh, over, um. So I got the census records from the town clerk. I got the election, uh, uh, records from the town clerk as well and the assessment information from the website. Uh, and looked to see whether or not there are any real patterns in terms of participation. With respect to age, with respect to total value of assessed, for single family homes, total assessed value, precinct. Um, uh, market area, uh, which is, you know, how the, you know, that stuff, but, but how the. There's a multiplier for your, your property assessments based upon your market area. So I looked at all that stuff and basically I didn't really see any real patterns. Uh, uh, I am, I've received some more data from the clerk for looking at more years. Uh, with the voter, with the voter rolls, and so I'll, I'm looking at more of that now. Um, I'm curious to see again if, if with a larger sample, if anything emerges, but basically. Uh, um, my, my takeaway from the participation study was that if people want to come, they'll show up. And if they're not interested, they don't show up. There was a huge difference in turnout for the presidential election last year. Uh, for example, uh, and so that the people's voter's response to elections is, is. Not wired by age, it's not wired by, by where you live. It's wired by something else. And my inference is that it's wired by what's going on in the election.
I'm sorry, so is that the answer to the question about like when people say? Town meeting is a representative because there's only three percent of people that come and make the votes. I mean, does that?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at, yeah.
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 I think, I think that's the critical thing because I think that's why we keep having these.
Yeah.
Every ten or thirty year study committees.
Yeah. Uh, and it's not, they don't come, they don't choose to come.
Right. I, I.
But also that I think the folks that say that. May not like the outcome of what's happening and therefore they say that.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying, so. That is true, but when they say that, if, if the response was, well, actually.
Yeah.
It is representative in these ways. I mean, it's not going to change that person's opinion, but it might.
Yeah.
Save another committee.
So, so.
Somebody to dig up forty years later, maybe we should have a time capsule?
You know, partly why we're going to pick the data on the site and, and the, and the report and all the other stuff is because.
There'll be some nerds who want to read it.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Where was the nineteen ninety-six report previously on the website?
Oh, it was on there. It might have been under the town governance, which was more recent.
For nineteen ninety-six.
Yeah, it, because that was only, you know, ten years ago, but it was, it was accessible.
It's been on our website.
It was on ours, but he, but before it was on our newly established page.
Yeah.
In general, yes, it's always hard to, you have to be wanting to look for something key by keyword.
Makes a promise to keep it right front and center.
I mean.
Katie, let me ask you, have you had a chance to look at any of the, the survey stuff or the participation stuff?
I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance yet.
That means it's not bad. It's all I needed. All right, when, in due course, please. I'm still working, so, uh, something else that was in the packet was a six pager on communications. Uh, if anybody looked at that, if any, any takeaways from that, and the previous meeting had a two pager, very tactical. This one more philosophical, more conceptual, uh, uh, you know, it's me. So, so I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at that or had any comments on that.
I just, I glanced at it briefly and about your narratives on the, on the studies that you did. In fact, you did what you said you were going to do.
Good.
Uh, and you fleshed out the communications. I thought you might be able to get Chase to help on that, but I, um. Looked like it was just you.
Yeah, yeah.
And when I didn't, I, I went through it, but. There was a table of contents. I thought I was looking for more pages.
There's a big document, a lot of pictures in it. I just included the first part.
Okay, so there, there was other parts of that.
Yeah, because it would have been a, a long packet, so it was already. Moving right along. Uh, so the chair's reflection, there's an executive summary in there with a couple of, more than a couple of typos in it. And an outline as well. Still working on that. Uh, my goal is to get that out of my life by the end of the week. It's been hard.
I get it.
Yeah, I know you do. I know you do. You know, my daughter said she would read it, so I was like, okay, now I have an audience, so, so, yeah.
Also get it published nowadays, you know, Amazon and then the library kind of, it's more than one place.
Yeah, um, so working through that, if anybody's interested, uh, in reading that at some point, uh, let me know. Uh, and you know, what I can do is when I get a, a good draft out, I can get it out via Shannon and, uh, and welcome any comments.
How can we say no to that offer?
Oh, wow, thank you, thank you.
I will read it.
Um, so, so that's it. Uh, more stuff to get up on the website, but you know, we've made our recommendations. I'm going to revise these meeting decks and you'll see that, uh, this week and again through Shannon. Um, um, what else do we have? Anything else? Are we done? Uh, David Allen, I'm getting the last word though. So you got to make this one sustain for me, please.
Before I go here, I'm seeing a developer. I want to know, where's access to this website you're talking about? Is it up?
Oh, yeah.
Right now, I know they're going to T M S C.
That's exactly where you're going.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what we talked about. Where I usually go in other words.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, pretty clearly you want to hear this because this is what's going to be circulating between now and coming again. Uh, it's increased culture to your discussion here. I'll put it this way, I fail in full disclosure of this. Eric, I might, I can, but it will take a moment. I guess before, there was a different real issue here and. I actually wrote this up on the five-page document, which was a few weeks ago, but to say it out loud here. Uh, the problem with clickers is that they invite into town meeting folks who will not deliberate. Because they refuse to show their position. And we just noticed before, the conclusion I said we came to was that. Deliberation is an essential element. In fact, we can't have a real town meeting if you don't. Now you got folks in there who don't do the same, which is. Time meeting makes a lot of deliberation. Uh, let me make the comparison that will get made. Uh, it amounts to chilling speech. For reasons personal to these people. They worry about losing a customer. Afraid that, uh, the superintendent will take retribution against their child or for whatever. Frankly corrupt reasons. These people, uh, and they're cheap, their speech chilled. And what do we see going on right now at the national level? Trump is doing his best to do what autocrats do, which is chill speech. At law firms, at universities, I can count four or five other places, I won't own about it. You don't have a democracy if you can't speak up in simple words. This is most fundamental. If folks are coming to town meeting, they have to come so they can participate in the real thing. Deliberation, if they got other problems, we as a community need to support them. And getting them together as a superintendent, so don't feel like it is their child and on and on and on and on.
So, thank you, David.
You, you hear what the story is here.
Good, we have other, other comments as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Uh, Carmen, I'll start you first and then I'll go to Ned Perry, please.
I just want to say thank you to each and every member of the town meeting study committee. And especially to Eric Moore, the chair, who has put in, um, countless. Hours and, um, energy into the process of thinking about. Our town meeting process in Concord and how we can make it better. And I am very, very grateful to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, here.
Uh, Ned Perry.
Carmen said it much better than I. Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you, thank you. Um, so I think we are done. Um, Shannon, I wanted to. I think, well, I haven't called, I haven't closed the meeting yet. Shannon, thank you for your support of the committee. Uh, we'll, we'll be in touch over the next couple of weeks. Again, uh, uh, once they get, uh, some videos up of revised presentations, you'll see links to that. I welcome making this better. Uh, and thank you. It's great.
Technically, we're going to post a meeting at town meeting in case we have to deliberate.
Are we going to do that? No, we pulled that out, actually.
So the school committee. I think there's a.
Carmen, are you, is your head still up or is it?
Yeah, I can help with that particular issue on the posting of a committee meeting at town meeting. Um, in fact, the, the, uh, town meeting is one of the, uh. Uh, one of the exceptions to the open meeting law. Uh, so you don't actually have to post a, a meeting at, at town meeting. However, notwithstanding that, the town clerk posts every board and committee for a meeting during town, uh, town meeting. Uh, just in case, so if you have a quorum there during town meeting and you wish to. Uh, deliberate and take a position on something that is happening at the meeting and report on it, on that, you may do so.
Well, thank you, but we don't have any authorities, so. All right, so the time is eight forty-eight P M. I declare this meeting closed. Thank you very much.